This conference will now be recorded.
Ninth, twenty twenty four, and I'd like to call today's work session to order. Clark, may I please have roll call?
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Casper.
Absent, excused.
Councilmember Boyle. Councilmember Leah.
Present.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Strobin.
Here. Thank you, Clark. Thank you, everyone. Tonight, we have a presentation, Draft Land Use Housing Elements and Draft Land Use Scenarios. This is for the comp plan updates. Mr. Alec, here we go, Alec.
I'll let you give it a try. Eggerola.
Eggerola.
Yes.
Will be presenting tonight. Alec, all yours.
Thank you, City Council, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me tonight to present. It's been a few months I've been here in front of the City Council. Just to reintroduce myself, Alec Eggerola, WSP, a land use planner, working as a consultant for the city on the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan update. And tonight, we're discussing the draft land use and housing elements and code. And also the land use scenarios. The land use scenarios will probably be the biggest topic tonight. So if we can go to the next slide. So again, as the purpose for tonight is those land use scenarios, that'll be the latter half of the presentation. But I'll focus on the draft land use and housing elements and those code, associated code updates, and then next steps. And before I proceed in the presentation, I just want to ask to hold any questions until I complete the presentation, just to streamline the process. But I'll come back to the end and ask for questions from the City Council members and also ask for specific areas for input, specifically those land use scenarios. So I'll run through the presentation, and if you could hold your questions, that would be much appreciated until the end. So thank you. And then next slide, please. So since the last meeting, we had the county adopt allocations, population, housing, and employment allocations for the whole county and applies for all the jurisdictions in the county, including the center. So we have adoption, allocations for jobs, employment, housing, and I'll go into those a little further in my presentation. There's been a refinement of the land use scenarios. We've been doing these for the past several months. We've met with various property owners that were proposing these land use changes. There's been a lot of county coordination on these land use scenarios processes and also inputting the subareas, the Timon Landing and downtown subareas into those land use scenarios. And then lastly, the draft land use and housing elements and code that we're going to discuss tonight has gone through a couple of reviews at the Planning Commission, including a city staff review. So there's been a lot of input on this as well up to this point. And essentially, I'm presenting this to you with a lot of this refined up to you, to up to the City Council at this point. Next slide, please. So the first item I want to touch on are the land use element updates. So this is chapter one of the comprehensive plan. We updated to make it consistent with other elements of the county plan and within other elements of the city's comprehensive plan itself. There's a section about the city's population demographics. Obviously, from the last comprehensive plan that was adopted in twenty sixteen, those are outdated, so we've updated with current census data. We also updated the planning assumptions and targets within that to match with the counties adopted for the city. And then updated several goals and policies of that element to provide adequate employment in residential lands, considering climate change impacts, which that's another element that will present down the road to City Council in the next few months. Planning for the junctions and mixed-use area and fostering community identity and compatibility. So those are some of the goals and policies we've updated in the draft land use element. Next slide, please. And then the next element we've updated is the housing element. And this is chapter three of the comprehensive plan. We've updated the current inventory and analysis of the housing in the center based upon census data, the Washington State Office of Financial Management data, and then just on-the-ground permitting data. And we've also updated the capacity and allocations consistent with land use element for housing specifically, specifically accommodating and planning for housing of all income segments per the new GMA requirements for housing. So that's listed in the housing element. And then we've updated goals and policies to address housing and different types and needs per that new GMA requirement, addressing affordability in different income groups, and then having affordable housing in proximity to employment locations. And housing preservation and racially disparate impacts were also discussed in the goals and policies. Next slide, please. So this is kind of where it gets a little more technical, so I'm going to keep it pretty high level for the code updates we did. Essentially, with this whole comprehensive plan process, what we did was all the development regulations that are required to be updated per state mandate, we've lumped them with like-minded pieces of the comp plan. So we took these pieces and lumped them with the land use and housing, since they are pertinent to land use and housing. So this is the code we've updated so far related to land use and housing. The first is regarding impact fees. Chapter three point three five of the listener municipal code includes updates regarding deferral specifically for single-family and single-family detached and attached housing. They can defer their impact fees up until the occupancy certification. And also updating the definition development per RCW listed up there. The second item is on design standards throughout Title eighteen of the code. Essentially, what this state requirement says that design standards have to be objective and very clear to a developer of what's permitted in the city or not. There can't be language that's very subjective and kind of up to interpretation. So we went through the code and revised to eliminate anything that would be subjective and kept things pretty, pretty clear. And you're very, very aware of what's permitted or not in the city. And then last here is short plats in chapter eighteen two oh five. There's just some minor tweaks here that the state is asking for, requiring short plats subdivisions, which are subdivisions of a lot for subdividing into four lots or less. These are required to establish adequate public facilities and to update for approval expiration periods for these subdivisions. Next slide, please. So these two items come from that new housing bill as well, from a couple of years back, from the state legislation on permanent supportive and transitional housing and emergency shelters in housing. So essentially, what this says for permanent supportive and transitional housing is that these have to be allowed where residences and hotels are allowed in the city. And essentially, that's every zone in the city. However, in our code, we're conditionally allowing these, and that means if they're conditional use, they have to go to a public hearing. And we'll go through the public hearing process for approval. And so they'll be subject to conditional approval. And that same applies for emergency shelters and housing. These are only allowed and where hotels are allowed, which is the junction plan zone. Again, in the code, we drafted, this is a conditional use permit. So they'll go through a permitting process that requires a public hearing for the approval and are subject to the conditional use permit requirements. And both the permanent supportive and transitional transitional housing and emergency shelters and housing will be subject to specific requirements. Listen, eighteen two seventy seventy of the code, there's really specific requirements for these uses that we listed that have to do with where they're, where they can be applied and what zones, performance standards, and being a conditional use. So there's pretty detailed code regulations on these. Next slide, please. This is a table in the existing code, and there's a similar table in the land use element. And they were not consistent and currently are not consistent. So we just went through and made this table that lists comprehensive plan designation with the corresponding zoning district and the implementing code section. We just cleaned this up a bit to be consistent with what's going on in the city and make it consistent with the comprehensive plan. So this was just essentially cleaning up the code a bit. Next slide, please. This is another GMA requirement. It's for unit lot subdivisions. So what you see there in that top left green square is your parent lot, so your lot that you're looking at subdividing. So it's a standard lot size of seven thousand square feet. A unit lot is that far right, top right corner. It's essentially you have a structure and you're creating lots or individual lots to sell for each unit in that structure. And the parent lot would be subject to all the underlying zone requirements, but unit lot has a little more flexibility. They still have to be developed to density standards and lot area requirements, but there's a little more flexibility about setbacks and lot coverage. But they still have to comply with allowing access, utilities, having common spaces, landscaping, and so forth. So there's still some specific language, but it's essentially a way to encourage infill housing within developed portions of the city and to addressing the need for more housing across the state and all the cities. Next slide, please. And we have a couple more on code, and then it gets a little more interesting after this, hopefully for you all. So for co-living housing, this is a new house bill that came through this past legislative session. So co-living housing is essentially housing that each room's rented out, but they share a common kitchen and living space typically. These have to be allowed in zones where there are six or more units permitted. And so that's in all of our medium-density zones with MDR sixteen, RP, mixed-use and junction plan zones. And there's specific standards for the size of these. They have to comply to the density of the zone are subject to connection fees and parking requirements. And then that last bullet there is an updated definition for affordable housing that the state has updated. And so we just updated the definition to comply with that in the state, in the city's definitions. Next slide, please. This last part of the code updates is a house bill where a city must allow density bonuses for housing on property owned by religious organizations. And they have to be affordable for at least fifty years. And these affordable housing developments must be exclusively occupied by low-income households. And this is a means of a city of accommodating for low-income housing that's been allocated by the state and by the county. So this is another avenue of that. Essentially, this hasn't been implemented yet in southern Washington, but since northern Washington's a little further on this process, on the comprehensive plan update, since they had to adopt by the end of this year versus where to do all this by end of next year. I did some research up there. A lot of them were in bigger jurisdictions where they're allowing density bonuses up to eighty percent, which I knew that wouldn't be feasible here in the center, so I scaled it down. So looking at the low-density residential zone, if a religious organization wanted affordable housing development, it'd be a density bonus that's twenty-five percent greater than the maximum density. And then for the medium-density residential zones, it's forty percent. So that middle column there shows the maximum density by zoning and dwelling type. And then that far right column is the maximum density allowed with that bonus. And so that's what we have proposed here. So for example, for the MDR sixteen multifamily, the maximum density is sixteen units per acre. But if you had an affordable housing development, the maximum density could go up to twenty-two point four units per acre, which is forty percent greater than the maximum. And next slide, please. So we're kind of flipping to a different topic, but still related to all of this is the land use scenarios. And if you go to the next slide, please. I switched in order really quick on these slides, but I wanted to show you the allocated number of housing from the county that was assigned to the center. That bottom left number, two thousand one hundred and twenty-three, is the total number of units assigned to the center from the county to plan for twenty forty-five. So we have to accommodate that many units through twenty forty-five. And then, as you see in the table above, those numbers by each income segment, the county assigned housing needs by income segment. For example, for the fifty to eighty percent average median income, AMI, listeners are supposed to accommodate for four hundred and four units. So we went through and said essentially, everything eighty percent and above would be accommodated by the city's current capacity in the low-density zone. And everything eighty percent and below would be accommodated by the medium-density residential zones. So overall, once you take those allocations and put it to our current capacity, there's a current deficit of negative, deficit of two hundred and three units for eighty percent or below housing units, and then a pretty large surplus for anything eighty percent and above. And if you go back to the previous slide, and I'll have a map showing this, but we did two land use scenarios for housing and employment. And I'll go further in this with the map. But in scenario A, essentially, we took the existing UGA and went through the city and determined areas that could be upzoned to accommodate that deficit for eighty percent or below housing. And we found about twenty-one acres throughout the city to rezone from low-density residential to medium-density to accommodate that deficit, where we end up with a surplus of eighty-five units. Scenario B was essentially, we rezoned only about four and a half acres from LDR to MDR sixteen. And then we are proposing an expansion of about fourteen acres north of the junction plan of high-density residential to accommodate that lower-income housing need, and that results in a slightly larger surplus at ninety-three units. And again, I'll go over these in the map for context. And then if you go to the next slide, please, and slide after, I'll jump into employment. And once I'm done with employment, I can get into the map, and that will help frame what I'm seeing here a little bit more. So the employment capacity, we were allocated just over two thousand jobs by the county. Our current capacity is just over two thousand, and there's a slight deficit there. But we went ahead and took out the land put into tribal trust, since that's a lot of the junction plan, and that's accommodated for jobs. So we built that into this model, and then we adjusted for the subarea plans, the latest iterations of those. And so taking account of those two items, we have an existing deficit just under two hundred jobs. Next slide, please. And then for our land use scenarios, we have scenario A and B. The difference from A and B is just the amount of expansion we're proposing. Both scenarios are expansion only of their urban growth area. Scenario A has more than B, and therefore, we have a greater surplus of jobs after we adjust the land needed. And then scenario B, we actually still have a existing deficit overall. Next slide, please. So this is the map I keep referencing to, and just to give a quick overview of what's going on here. So if you look at numbers one, two, and three, essentially, those all are scenario A properties. And scenario A is those properties shaded there are going from low-density residential to medium-density residential. And we picked those because there's citing criteria for medium-density residential where they have to be near arterials, near public facilities like schools and so forth, and other criteria such as that. And then for area four, if you go to the northwest, there's about four properties there. All of them are proposed to go from low-density to medium-density, but the two purple ones next to that four on the southern, the southern two of those four are both slated in scenario A and B to be rezoned, where those northern two are just scenario A. And then if you look at five, north of the junction plan, there's about three properties here. Scenario A, those will be for employment at twenty jobs per acre, so commercial lands. And then scenario B, that would be for high-density residential. So those two are the main, the big differences between scenario A and B are those properties at area five. And then area six, those are expansion in both scenarios, and those are expansion for employment lands or for nine jobs per acre, and there's about six properties there.
Does any of that extend our current city limit?
Five and six does. Yeah, those are expansions. So when I say expansion, they expand beyond our city limits in the urban growth area. And then, next slide, please. So before we get into questions and discussion and where we get our input, just giving a brief overview, next steps. So we're going to revise the elements that we presented tonight for land use and housing and the code per council comments from tonight. And then essentially, each module will be bringing forth to you throughout the next year. We're going to be bringing a draft to you, get your comments, and then hold for adoption. So tonight's land use and housing, and then in the future, there'll be environment and climate, transportation, and so forth. So bring these to you, get your comment, hold for, hold that draft for ultimate adoption of the whole package late next year. So that's the overall process. And then also, after tonight, we'll revise the land use scenarios that I just discussed after your inputs, and we'll submit these revisions to the county, because the county is wanting to get these moving for their environmental impact statement assessment. And then this last bullet here, we're currently working on a draft environment and climate elements and the draft critical areas ordinance. We brought the first draft of Planning Commission last night. We'll take their comments and revise for a second draft in November, and then tentatively, we'll be bringing a draft of that to City Council in December if the schedule holds. So if you go back one slide, I think the main discussion tonight, and we can discuss everything else too, code-wise and element-wise, but the big topic tonight is the land use scenarios and if, what the City Council would like to see, and if they prefer A or B, or maybe something different. So that's the big ask for City Council tonight.
Before we start taking questions, Alec, did you show, you said you showed this to the Planning Commission last night?
The, the land use scenarios?
Yeah.
We haven't showed the specific one, but we've shown an iteration a few months back that's very similar to this.
And what was their comments or opinions on that?
They generally preferred the expansion for housing. So the expansion to the north of the junction plan instead of having that for employment. And that was a common, we also did some tabling this summer with the community, and that was generally the community's input as well, that they would like to see expansion for housing out that way, rather than rezoning within the current city boundaries.
Did they give reason to that at all?
What was that?
Did they give reason to that, why they would want housing versus?
Yeah, the big, the big one was traffic, the bottlenecking at the bridge. If you increase the density north of the bridge, the people envision all the traffic feeding back onto the bridge and out to I five. So that was a bit concerned of why not increasing zoning and density within existing city, existing city limits.
And I noticed you don't have any zoning yet forecasted in here for the new downtown area.
Yeah, we built that into the model, and I want to go back just one second, just to rephrase for the preference for Planning Commission. If we do the scenario B expanding for housing north of the junction plan, it actually creates a jobs deficit. Because in scenario A, we're including that area for jobs and not housing, where it'll create a jobs surplus. So I just want to make sure that you are aware of that. But back to, can you ask your previous question again? Downtown, yeah, the downtown, the Timon Landing subareas, those are concept plans right now, so the zoning is not finite. But I plugged in those numbers we have so far in this mapping. It's a huge spreadsheet, it would really bore you guys, but it's, I promise it's built in there.
Okay. So five and six were preferred residential development versus?
Yeah, because five, so six is both scenarios. It's for employment land. Five, scenario A would be for commercial, or scenario B would be for a high-density residential. But again, scenario A would result in a jobs surplus, and scenario B would result in a jobs deficit. Therefore, we'd have to seek somewhere else to make up for that deficit essentially.
Keep, keep in mind, counsel, that when commercial activity is at the junction, they're going to want to expand at the junction because of the easy access on and off, plus the distribution areas in Ridgefield as well, right? So if we turn that into housing, we are taken away from potential jobs, and not only jobs, but commercial revenue sources as well.
Yeah, it seems like to be shooting ourselves in the foot. I mean, we talked about this several times about development as far as, you know, building, oh, you know, diversifying our income and stuff, and I mean, people all the time, it's surprising that that's the direction they want to go, because we hear all the time, but everybody wants to keep the center small. And if you go to, you know, high-density residential, I think you're going to have just as much traffic impact if you would, you know, for having some sort of professional business there.
Well, and six was also envisioned when we had conversations as industrial area, right? If you look at zone six, that's some of the conversations that we got, and that's some of the areas that the landowners wanted to see it go as too.
Yeah, a lot of, both five and six were the county causing site-specific requests, where the property owners request to the county to add into the urban growth area. And so essentially, we're, we have the property owner's support of expanding with those site-specific requests. But kind of going back to the transportation item, if you rezone within the current existing city limits in the north, there's also that transportation concern. So just kind of evaluating
Right.
balancing, where should we expand, but also making sure aware of the community's concerns about transportation and traffic.
And it is going to get busy. So here's the other thing that has not been presented to you guys yet. The legislative priorities are going to be coming at you here in a month. In that legislative priority, some of it is, are looking at expanding the listener road to four lanes with a turn, and then the roundabouts going through it. So yes, traffic is always going to be a concern. I, you know, I'm not so sure here in the next seven years, but definitely the following seven years. And hopefully, we have our roads and stuff ready for what's coming. So that's why we're starting now with it. So what's the transportation issue?
There's just some community concern. If you increase density north of the bridge, that increased density means more residents, and more people will be driving across the bridge to get back out to I five. Versus if you made more of that population out near I five, there won't be all that traffic backing back onto the bridge to get to I five, they'd just be going to I five. Because I think there's concerns about traffic queuing at the roundabout in downtown and onto the bridge. And there's also concerns about, I think, resulting from the wildfire last year and evacuation, and that's the main evacuation route of the city. And if you increase housing in the north part of town and need to evacuate, that's, could be an issue.
Yeah.
So that was, that was also flagged from our tabling events.
How many houses does that create going into the north side if you kept it at eight? When you get a rezonant, how many more residences does that put?
It would be, that's, let me see here.
And another quick question on that, Alec, and for the council, is five, is that able to become a mixed use? Where you can do the apartments on the top and commercial down below or something along those lines to at least
Yeah, that
subsidize some of that traffic flow and
You could, you could do a mixed use up there. That could be definitely something to consider. You can assume, like for a current mixed use, I think we assume sixty percent is residential and forty percent is employment. So that's something that could be pursued. And then going back to your previous question, it's about four hundred units that would be added, that increased density.
How many cars per unit?
Neither of those planes, to be honest.
How many, how many cars per unit? Do we know? Do we have an idea, average?
It's like one and a half to two, somewhere in that range.
I guess I'd just be curious to hear what the Planning Commission's thoughts are behind this. I mean, I would definitely want to support them and, you know, hear what they have to say. But it just kind of, to me, it goes against everything that we've kind of been proposing and trying to, you know, develop for the future to, you know, like I said, bring business in, diversify our income. That sort of development was staged to be out of the junction so that it wasn't the city.
Yeah, and this is stemming down Yeah. And this is stemming down from the county where we have to address especially those lower income bands. And we have to basically show as much as possible, we're doing what we can to minimize the need for expansion. Hence why we're showing to rezone within the city for, to accommodate those housing needs. But we're still providing the option of expanding, um, for housing. But if you expand for housing currently, then you still have a jobs deficit between the two scenarios. And that's, that's what Tom was, Mayor Tom was trying to approach was, um, that mixed use to find a bridge, bridge the gap between the housing and jobs deficit.
Yeah, it's definitely been a challenge. Liz, you were here, or councillor Serbini, sorry, you were here during the last comp plan. Did you guys have any plans going forward with residential and, and jobs pushing out towards the junction?
I mean, no residential, um,
Right.
was discussed simply because it was prime, uh, open available property. For bringing in more commercial type and retail, um, revenues to the city. Keeping the residential development, um, on this side of the bridge, since it'd be closer to the schools. And, um, the normal flow of traffic that residential tends to bring. So the majority of the properties that were out there, um, were looked upon as prime, um, buildable lands for, uh, different types of commercial and retail and
Right, yeah, that's what I thought. All right.
Well, at some point, there was also discussion, um, Clark College and WSU doing, um, research labs and expanding their, uh, available curriculum. And that property at the lowest point in the green area and the purple area on six would have been, um, the property that they were discussing at that point. But I don't know if that's still going on or not.
I'm pointing at Tracy. I wanted to take a note of that so we can go and look into that. So i- in this, what you're saying in scenario A and B, this is over for the next seven years, right? And you're talking about 400 units?
It'd be for through 2045.
Oh.
Yeah.
One and a half cars, 400 units. That gives us some time to build out a transportation plan, which, which we've already started working on. For me, my opinion is to keep going with the commercial and such out and the industrial out of the junction. Leave the residential where we rezone inside. But I, I do agree. I think we do need to take into account for what the planning commission is seeing as well.
I mean, I see the, the ability to, um, examine multi use simply because that gives you the capacity to do multi levels. When you're doing construction out there, uh, on the limited buildable lands. And taking into consideration the great views that, um, would be available. I think those types of properties would be very, um, doable and, and interesting for people.
Yeah, I completely agree. Yeah.
And council member Severny, um, that just brings a good thought of like some jurisdictions are applying a, so they might have like a residential area, like a medium density residential area, then they're applying like an overlay, a mixed use overlay where it's not completely wiping out the, the, uh, potential of it being completely residential, but allowing flexibility for commercial and pocket commercial of some sort to come in, even vertical mixed use. So there's an opportunity to apply in that overlay and something like that where, um, it could accommodate all the housing need. But you can build the model where it shows there is some capacity there for employment. Just, it doesn't, zoning can fix a use and types of uses where an overlay allows a little more flexibility.
I mean, I already see great, um, restaurants at A and A. And on the, our side of the, of I five, I, I would see us being able to follow that type of mindset that make those fine dining restaurants quieter perhaps. And, and trying to market to different segments, but very similar in nature that would be traveling along I five. Or, you know, that same group that likes to go out to you.
Yeah, very cohesive. Yeah. So on six though, I, you, you're not talking about mixed use over there, right? We're talking more industrial?
Yeah, that'd be more industrial level.
Light industrial?
Yeah, nine, okay. So the model the county has is for employment or for more commercial oriented uses. It's 20 jobs per acre, but if it's more industrial oriented, it's nine jobs per acre. So that's what we have out for area six is the industrial, nine jobs per acre out there. It's more like industrial office type uses.
Yeah, we definitely need those.
Are they still talking about having the, um, training facility at the Ridgefield Junction area?
Yeah, that's still in the works.
Then I would also have us consider, um, property for an additional hotel to have, house the
The officers.
number of individuals that are going to be going through training with the lack of officers that we have, you know, statewide.
I, I think right now we're already, if you count A and A, there'll be three here within the next few years that are putting in permits now, so.
Well, that and, um, the activities with the colleges, um, you know, families and parents that come in for functions would be s- still relatively close to the college campuses and other things to do.
Yeah, agreed.
I think it would keep that type of traffic on one side of the bridge and then keep the residential traffic more closely linked to the flow of, um, the best routes and, and the markets and, and the stores downtown.
So just, you were just saying keep five as a residential?
Mixed use.
Mixed use, oh.
Well, mixed use. I wouldn't necessarily, actually. As far as residential goes, I'd be very careful about what type of residential you wanted to do. You know, simply try to gear it towards the market that's up there and, um, the potential for revenue that it could bring the city.
And that's why we were considering, um, high density residential since it's in proximity to employment lands of the junction plan, which is generally geared towards job creating land uses. And also it's still close proximity to, um, expansion area six, which is would be for light industrial. So having higher density housing and, uh, proximity to employment locations. And then another item to touch on is just I five corridors, huge visibility corridor for jobs. And they want to be visible to people driving by and hence why we are targeting near I five for additional job land.
Can we get a, a scenario C built in there then, where we're doing commercial or mixed use on five, industrial on six?
We could, we could look at that, yeah.
And then bring that back to council so they can see the numbers.
Just for my clarification, would it be like a higher density mixed use? So higher density residential with employment built in?
I mean.
Cause currently that's slated for 18 units per acre if it's residential. So we could do 18 units per acre and that could be, could say 60% of that land's for residential, 18%. Or 18 units per acre and then 40% of that land is for a commercial, 20 jobs per acre.
Cause that would all
Yeah.
assisted living.
You know, what's What's confusing is that we're looking at Timmins Landing there and you guys have got that down as a downtown commercial. Right? And that doesn't have any residential in there. And that's actually not how that's being planned out at this point. It's being planned out as
Yeah, this is, this is just the zoning map, the current zoning map. But we do have in our, we have this huge spreadsheet that has all the data. It's built into that. I, I promise it's there. So, and I had the numbers in the previous slide showing the jobs built in from that. Yeah. Yeah. But, um, and I also can, uh, take a look myself and do what I can to adjust numbers to make that job deficit zero, doing that scenario C. Finding the sweet spot for the mixed use up in the north junction area.
Are you guys in agreement for that scenario C? See what it looks like?
Yeah, I like that idea a lot. Look like a little, you know, parts of downtown Vancouver that have a lot of that.
Not, not to put more work on you, Alec, sorry. Or Tracy.
It's too late, but it's, it's, I kind of, I actually, once I get into the numbers, it's kind of fun to work it down to zero. So don't mind.
All right. Um, how long do you think that would take for us to be able to look at that?
Um, I can turn it around pretty fast. I could even do it in a day. It's, it's, the, the whole table's built up, so, um, I just had to play with numbers and it's good to go. So.
Okay.
Yeah, I can provide like a 15 minute update at the next council meeting, um, end of this month.
Does that work for council?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know, um, for the county's purposes, they're trying to push forward on this at the county Y level. So the sooner we get this done, the better. They're getting a little fancy with the, with the cities for a lack of better term.
I love it. They were dragging their feet for an extra few months and now it's push, push, push. Yeah. Understood. Thank you, Alec. Any more questions or comments for Alec?
Thank you very much.
All right. I think we got a direction.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. And that will conclude tonight's work session and we will be back here in about 20 minutes for a city council meeting. Thank you.
Well, I do
This conference will now be recorded.
Because these people wouldn't necessarily want a 15 minute
I'm like, I'm like, I, I didn't pay that. I want to steal.
Yeah, I like that.
No, this, this couple
Another question I had is they talked a lot last year about soil. There's six different types of soil in the center.
And that
They have to plan for when the tree falls in the space.
It's in my backyard.
And it made me start thinking about that big tree that, that builder came in and built that, I believe, a house in the apartment block. They busted the corners off.
You've got to ask for the insurance.
If you want to find good things, you have to go over to the house. Anything after 2002, 2004.
Big white house that blocked my view.
And now it's given, uh, you'll get 500 square foot. They're only five foot.
That big giant tree that crashes over the
The pond, that's where that, this are happening. All right, ready? Guys, ready? Ready?
Yes.
Clerk, please start the recording. Today is Wednesday, October 9th, 2024, and I'd like to call today's city council meeting to order. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded on individual, liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, may I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Casper.
Absent an excuse.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Leha.
Present.
Councilmember Severny.
Present.
Mayor Strubin.
Here. Thank you, clerk. Can we please call up any public comments from the audience?
Al Filla.
Al, please state your name and address for the record.
Al Filla, that's F I L L A, you know, because it was in the reflector, they did the pH thing, you know, so. If you're gonna, you know, put me in the paper, at least get my name right. Well, it's been a fun two weeks. I, uh, I've been stuffing people with a history question. Just dumped another person back there. He had to speak at the school history, you know, an educator and he didn't know. So anybody who thinks they know a lot about history, you know, come and see me after the meeting. Okay. What was I gonna say? Oh. Well, I, I really liked the talk about the planning stuff until right there at the end. And I mentioned it to some of y'all, you know, they're talking about residential out there at the junction. We don't want residential at the junction. What we want is commercial, industrial, jobs, 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 depending taxes, taxes, taxes. We haven't been doing very well, but you know, times are getting better. COVID's gone. So I've been told and, you know, at least people are interested a little bit, very little bit. You look, you compare us to that place down the road a little bit and, uh, they're doing, they're busting at the seams. Isn't that where, and Clark College was mentioned and yeah, they're, they're down over there next to the fire station and all that. They see the big sign. Yeah. So, yeah, we've got to get, everybody needs to get on board here. You know, if you go to, I don't go to many planning commission meetings, but maybe I, I should now that I've got extra time. But you gotta get on board.
You can be our advocate.
There you go.
You know, you've got, you know, taxes, taxes, taxes going on. Bang, bang, bang. Okay. Thank you, Godless America.
Thank you, Al.
Melissa Flat.
Melissa Flat, 660 East 18th Street, La Center, Washington. So it's been a while. But last week, I know the, the commander talked about this, drug takeback. I just want to thank the city again for bringing it back into city limits. It'll be from 10 to two on the 26th at the police station. So people tell me now, but we don't have a police station. Am I allowed to call the police station? The police station still?
Yes, please.
Okay, that's what I said. At the police station, I said it is, it is now being operated through the sheriffs. But it is the La Center Police Station. So, all right. Want to make sure I wasn't speaking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again, Melissa. Thank you.
No more comments from the audience.
Hey, anybody calling in or any, uh, audience members calling in, please hit star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. This is Kimberly Goheen Elban, life citizen and, and patriot of Clark County, Washington, USA. I'd, I'd like to speak up a little bit, um, you know, to the mayor, you and many, uh, people have moved here to a small town feel community for that reason, I hope, for the small town feel community. Uh, we don't believe it's inevitable that the growth management act has to take us over. It's not, uh, people don't have to think that growth is coming and it has to be here. Let Ridgefield grow. There is a Costco there and we can go over there and this and that. We don't have to have a big city feel here in La Center. Uh, let's keep our hometown country feel. So I am suggesting tonight, I'd like citizens to maybe get involved to see, and you know what? If it's the majority, I'm all for it. If people want to grow this town into a city, then so be it. But I don't think, uh, the people want to. So I'm going to suggest that we have a historical overlay over all of La Center city limits. That would of course exclude the junction where you can put your hotel and all your, our businesses up there. But as I see with the colored maps, you still want to put a huge, big red, um, industrial or commercial area just outside of, uh, crossing the bridge, heading out of town up there on that bluff. I am totally against that. It's going to put a, uh, I don't know how big of a story building there, uh, all the buildings, commercial and stuff. We don't need that here. We want that little road there, Timmins Landing Road to stay a country road for, for God's sake, that we can keep our little country feel. And, um, the fact is, is Clark County is running out of resources. I mean, we don't even have clean water. Battle Ground's running out of well waters and all that. So I do want to, um, beg the city and the people, of course, we the people, we, this is our government, to, uh, put a historical overlay over La Center, Washington, USA. So I'm going to speak a little bit about what happened today. I spoke this morning at, uh, eight o'clock this morning at the Vancouver, parking advisory committee. So I'm gonna speak a little bit about what happened today. I spoke this morning at, at eight o'clock this morning at the Vancouver um, parking advisory committee. Uh, they have a little area there where they're waiting, just waiting for light rail to come across. Um, so, and then I also spoke at the one o'clock Clark County council meeting, and if anybody would care to listen to that, uh, they are working on taking people that phone in, such as myself, uh, I did when, I went in person today. But they're going to take our First Amendment rights away and that you have to qualify to be handicapped enough to be on the phone to testify. I'm telling people right now, we are in big trouble. Our government is our government. It's our duty to uh, watchdog our elected officials and tell them what we want as a people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. Any other callers, clerk?
No other callers.
Thank you. Are there any public comments to be read?
No public comments to be read.
Moving on, consent agenda. There are no requests for any items to be removed from the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve? So moved?
Second.
It's been moving seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, council. We do have a presentation tonight, or a proclamation, sorry. My eyes are going faster than what I, I'm looking at. Tonight's proclamation is Breast Cancer, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And Mr. Don Stos is here to accept. Whereas October is nationally recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and aims to raise awareness and to educate about breast health and breast cancer, which is a leading cause of death in women in the United States. The month also recognizes the many patients, survivors, those living with metastatic breast cancer, their supporters, loved ones, and dedicated providers, and honors those lives lost to this uh, disease. And whereas in the Pacific Northwest, one in seven women are affected by breast cancer when the national average is one in eight women. And breast cancer also affects one percent of men. Only fifteen percent of diagnosis is related to family history. And twenty to thirty percent of those diagnosed with early disease will experience a recurrence. And whereas there are still too many health disparities among underserved communities by income, geography, insurance, race, ethnicity, age, and gender who are disproportionately affected by this disease. And whereas Pink Lemonade Project, a Washington-based nonprofit organization, is on a mission to educate, empower, and support all communities affected by breast cancer with vital outreach, education, screening, financial assistance, support groups, mentors, and community across Oregon and Southwest Washington. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite the community and spread important messages of, of early detection, screening, and prevention, and then after a diagnosis of the importance of emotional, psychological, and financial assistance for breast cancer patients. Whereas together, Pink Lemonade Project wants to work with all communities to increase health equity, reduce the number of new diagnosis, increase survivorship, and improve everyone's quality of life. Now there, therefore, I, Thomas Strubin, Mayor of La Center, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty four as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to join in this observance. I personally know Susan and a few others on that board. Susan is doing a wonderful job with Pink Lemonade and getting the message out. I encourage everyone to visit their website and to see what they are doing. It's absolutely amazing. They are helping people go through this traumatic event in their life that is life-altering and sometimes life-ending. And they are there every step of the way. I, it gives me goosebumps to tell you guys this because I've been involved with them for a few years now and it's something dear to my heart. In fact, I've got the pink recycling bin that sits in front of my house because of it. So I do encourage everybody to at least educate themselves and look into it. Thank you. Don, you get the sign one.
Oh, okay, we can do that. Come on over. Yeah, we were in a pink, that should have worked.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, the esteemed city staff, and interested citizens. Uh, I'm Don Stos, I'm core member for Pink Lemonade Project, and my wife was diagnosed with breast cancer about a while. And Pink Lemonade Project did so much to help us navigate her journey through breast cancer. And um, that's one of the reasons why Karen, as the mayor mentioned, you know, it's the number one killer woman in the United States of America and beyond. And uh, breast cancer does not discriminate. It seems so that younger and younger people, day in and day out, are, are deep diagnosed with breast cancer. So, you know, we're a grant-dependent organization. It costs us a lot of money to help those people and with the support of every city in Southwest Washington, like La Center, uh, it helps us raise that much more money, so. Um, I really appreciate this proclamation and everything you've done and I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the uh, pink recycle cart. I left uh, some sand on the back, baby back there, and let's turn La Center pink with recycle bins. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Don. Uh, and next time when we do this, I'd love to have one of the videos from the auction of showing some of the, the things that you guys are doing. It's absolutely, hands down, amazing. Yeah. All right. Next up is the mayor's report. So we're, we're gonna change up the mayor's town hall a little bit. Just so you know, I, I've been here in town hall since I was a little kid and my grandparents set it and I'd like to make it a little different. So we're gonna call it the mayor's meetup. Having dessert with the mayor. We're gonna do this on Monday, May fourth, five thirty to seven PM. November fourth, did I say, what did I say?
You said May.
May. That's because I, I ended up writing May, to be honest with you. I wrote May on there. I don't know what I was thinking. I listened to something else going on, whatever, I don't know. So Monday, November fourth, uh, five to seven PM, five thirty to seven PM. Come on down, have some cookies and something to drink and uh, let's have a conversation. Like to discuss, you know, the direction the city's going in, some of the ideas that the, the residents have, uh, and just to get to know you and, and allow you to get to know me. And that's all I have tonight. Next up is our attorney's report. Janine, are you with us? She with us? She is. There we go.
I am with you. I just couldn't find my mouse, so sorry about that. Um, I don't have anything to report, just been busy working on stuff with staff and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Any questions for the attorney? I think we're good, Janine. Thank you. Next up is council comments. Councilmember Fox.
Hello, good evening. Glad to see everybody. I don't have a lot to say tonight other than just uh, go Hawks, they're playing, eighth grade's playing right now and, you know, my heart's with my son, but it's also here with the people, so. Um, I'm excited to, you know, work with uh, you know, our engineers and, and our team and obviously the um, the code, the uh, sorry, I'm losing it.
Comp plan?
Yes, but the planning commission, thank you, sorry, and, and working with, with them and, and really, you know, creating a plan for the future. So I mean, we, we do want business, we do want infrastructure. Um, obviously residential's gonna have to come, but just know that that's what we want and, you know, it's not gonna be done for another year, so give it some time and, you know, we have a lot of time to add input and all that, so thanks for being here.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I won't continue on about the comp plan and whatnot. That was kind of on my topic for tonight. Um, I think we all, just wanna, you know, make sure we're heading down the right direction as a community to, you know, grow and prosper. Um, both, you know, in the, at the same speed, I guess. But yeah, I guess I don't really have a whole lot tonight. I'd like this new fall weather we got coming around a little bit and um, Halloween's coming up, so I guess get ready for all those little kids be running around. Um, other than that, all I got.
It's gonna be a good Halloween. Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Leah.
Well, I did attend the planning committee last night, the planning commi- commission. I found it very interesting and um, kind of half of it went over my head. There was so much. It was like getting hit with a water hose. So I am going to try to attend more of those meetings because I really do want to learn um, so that I can have good input too from the city council position. So thank you, everyone, for attending tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Servini.
Well, thank you, everyone, for coming once again. It's always great to see your faces and um, hear from you, give us your perspectives. I would just like to also recognize that this month is National Hispanic Heritage um, Recognition and um, we've got a, a good number of Hispanic families in our community that do great things, so let them know how much we appreciate them when you see them, whether it's at the football games or at the corner market or at the bridge, when you're buying some of the goods that they sell. Uh, they do a lot for the community, so thank you for that.
Thank you. We do have a staff report tonight, community development and public works staff, and I don't know what's wrong with me speaking tonight. Blah, 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 sorry. Uh, staff report for community development and public works. Ms. Tracy Coleman will be presenting. Tracy?
Okay, a couple things. So before I get into the staff report, I've had um, just have a couple comments. Um, first of all, our surplus items are up live on the auction site, and so we will have a link tomorrow on our website if we don't already have one there now. Um, so you can go on, the auction is live now through the twenty fifth of October. You can um, pick up the items uh, from the twenty eighth to the first of November. And then there's a view date that will be listed on the website as well. If you want to view any of the items, we have a certain time where you can go in and view that. So that'll be listed on our website as well. So just so you're aware of that. Um, also, I wanted to say that um, I wanted to thank everybody who's given comments in regards to the entrance to the city, the way it looks. Um, it's very nice to receive the comments. I did have a public uh, request in regards to the cost, so I wanted to go over that a little bit. Um, so people are aware of what that cost is and, and to see if we have any feedback from council, if they want to proceed with that or if they've had any other feedback from the community in regards to the cost. So when we're talking about cost, we're talking about the cost of the flower baskets, the cost of the flags, the cost of the banners, the cost of the irrigation, and any labor that goes to take it up and down. So I put together all those costs. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're talking about the banners that are like up there right now, the decorative ones, not the veteran, but they're all, there are also costs for the veterans banners, but the city did not pay for those. So when we're looking at the overall cost for all of this and we look at our overall budget, and I'm, when I'm talking budget, I'm only talking streets. I'm not talking the overall city budget. I took all of this out of the streets based on what our budget was. And so when we're looking at the cost, um, we're looking at point zero, zero, nine percent of the overall street budget cost. And if, and so now that that's done, so I use point zeros, I didn't use one percent, point zero, zero, nine. And then also the ongoing cost of the basket is point zero, 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 eight percent of the budget. And those baskets cost twelve hundred dollars. So I just want you to be aware that now that that project is done, the ongoing cost is going to be for the baskets and to put those up and down. Um, we've already purchased the flags, we've already purchased the banners, so that overall cost again was point zero, zero, nine percent. So um, the, also, if you want to look at that in relationship to a street project, um, the hot mix asphalt project that we have going out right now, um, which is a forty-eight thousand dollar project, that's point zero, two percent of that project cost. So if people are saying we shouldn't be putting, putting baskets up, so on and so forth, uh, we should be putting that money into the streets, it would take us thirty-seven years to save that cost of the baskets and such to do that hot mix asphalt. So if I took the money that we spent and we put it in the bank, um, in thirty years, we could do that one project. So I want you to know that the cost is very minimal, and if you want to not put those up, that's fine. We'll continue to put the banners up, but if you decide, uh, if you have feedback from the community and they don't want to spend that money, um, then you need to make sure you let me know so I don't plan for those baskets next Mother's Day year, um, and so on and so forth. Uh, the water cost is very minute and that's been included in this as well. So I just wanted to make sure you guys know that. I also, the reason why I did this is because I look at this as the entrance to our city. So kind of like when you're walking up to somebody's house, you look at their front door and you look at, is their paint chipped and peeled? Is the light porch burned out? The light, is the, you know, deck creaking as you're walking across it? Or do you have a fresh coat of paint, a very new, brand new bright LED lamp and a nice stained deck? So to me, I look at that as that, that, that's our entrance to the city and I, I think that we should beautify it. So, but if you have any other feedback, I need you to let me know before I do the budget next year and spend that money on those, those costs. So just please make sure that you share that with me.
I think they look great.
Okay. Um, the other item that I wanted to share is, oh, and one other thing I wanted to say, to research this as far as what the cost was, um, was at a thirty-one percent cost of the overall cost for my time to do it. So thirty-one percent of the cost was spent in my time to research how much it costs to do all that. So. Yeah, it's minute.
Wait a minute, I, I paid for some of those banners.
Well, you, you paid for, you, you did pay for the ba- I'm not talking about any of the banners for the military.
Oh.
I'm only talk, I did, I didn't do those because those costs were paid for by others. I'm only talking about the cost for like the ones that are there that say, welcome to, welcome to La Center, so on and so forth, so.
Understood.
I just want people to be aware of that.
I want to thank you, Tracy, for breaking that down because I think it is important to have a good look, just like you said, to have a good look when you're walking into your home, own home, your own yard. I think it is important. It makes our city look like we care. And I appreciate that you broke it down, just in case somebody says to me, what about the cost? I can say it's point zero, 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 nine percent.
Yeah, yeah. Point zero, so to maintain it is point zero, 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 eight for the ongoing cost.
Okay.
Of the overall, just the street budget, not the overall city budget, only for streets. So you're aware. And if you want to know that, that, that actual dollar number, I, I can, it's, like I said, it's one thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars is what the baskets cost us and, and the um, uh, irrigation. So it, it will go up next year, I'm sure, like inflation does. So if you want to add five percent to that cost, it's gonna go up a little bit, but just so everybody's aware.
Well, thank you, Tracy.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then public works operations right now, um, as you see around the city, and we have some signs around the city, we're doing preparation for our, our hot mix asphalt repair. So you see, we're doing a lot of grinding on the streets. So I've uh, been having the public works department work more in the streets so we can save some costs there versus putting it out to bid. So we're only having somebody come in to actually lay the hot mix asphalt. So you'll see our crew out there working a lot diligently and you'll diligently. Um, and then you'll see we're writing equipment to save in cost as well. So we're doing that right now. The hot mix asphalt is gonna be, start to be laid down on uh, October twenty-second. Also, the community center revitalization project, I just want to say we have bids due back on November fifth for that, for the remodel. And I was very pleasantly surprised, we had twenty-two contractors show up for that job because we bid it in the winter, which is always good to do because everybody's eager for money in the winter months because it's an indoor job. So anyway, I'm, I, and that's our first meeting. I have another meeting next week, so I'm hoping that we'll get some very competitive bids. I also shared with them that this grant dollar, and if they had the bids come in at a certain dollar amount, that we would make sure and spend the full grant dollar amount, so give them more work to encourage them to bid lower. So we'd say, we're gonna spend this dollar amount, whatever the bids come in, so I'm hoping the bids come in low, and I said we would add to it to get up to our grant dollar amount. So we could get more bang for our buck. Um, and parks and grounds, we have irrigation winter preparation is going on right now. We'll have all of our irrigation lines completed and blown out by the end of October and hopefully get a final mowing in there. Um, I want to let the community know and the council members know that um, I have pulled our crew out of parks a little bit, so you might see the grass a little bit longer, you might not see us edging going on, you know, every week versus every two weeks because we have a lot of road work to get done. So I'm trying to utilize our labor hours on that versus the parks since it's towards the end of the year. And I think that we can let our grass grow a little bit more and concentrate on getting the road projects done so we don't have cold mixed asphalt out there and we can, but we won't be hitting as many potholes. That's my goal. Um, so just so you know, if the parks look a little bit longer grass, so on and so forth, until we can get some possibly new um, labor force in that we've budgeted. labor force in that we've budgeted for next year, that we can continue to do both and get a good balance. At the wastewater operations, all our plant parameters basically remain well within the compliance of the MPDES permits, which is Department of Ecology. And then on our Fourth Street Signal Project, we actually have a pre-construction meeting scheduled this week with the construction to start this month, we're hoping, and then obviously to be completed by December of two thousand twenty five, if not sooner. That's the latest we can complete it. Our Fourth Street Widening and Breezy Creek Culvert Project, we're still waiting on two right-of-way acquisitions, but we're working diligently with those two citizens for the right-of-way acquisition. And then I think you guys are all aware that all of the parking lots throughout the city, the slurry seal was completed and all the painting. So I think if you go into any city parking lot, it looks a little nicer and neater when you're driving in there. And then on our Building Department at Highland Terrace Phase Two, we have eleven homes that are currently under construction. And Case Place has two homes and Stevens Hillside has ten homes under construction. Lockwood Meadow has five and Ace's View has seven homes under construction. And then the code enforcement is a misprint in there. I thought I corrected that, but I did not, so I apologize. We have fulfilled the code enforcement officer position and she is making great progress. I think we're down to just maybe a handful that haven't been closed yet. So I'm I'm really excited and we're also giving her any and or duties as assigned. So I am working with her to make this a Tree City USA. So La Center will be known as a Tree City USA and I'm hoping council is good with me proceeding with that. So we'll be recognized for having greenery within our city. And then on top of that, if you don't want me to do that, please share that with me. If the citizens do not want this to be a Tree City USA, please make sure you talk to your council members and and share. And then also our community development activity, we have sixty one residential builds to date, well, applications, I should say. And then we have no multifamily. We have a hundred and twelve other, the other is like roofing, right-of-way mechanical plumbing permits that were pulled. And then special, which are solar panels, cell towers, decks, covered patios, fencing, we have seventeen of those, which total a hundred and ninety. And in addition to that, we have a twenty nine total land use permits in to date. So that's all I have on that. Does anybody have any questions as to what I've shared?
That's all you have?
That's all I got today.
Can you, people still do online, if I remember right, when we had the last code enforcer, they could go online and fill out like a thing? Is that still, is that now back up or has it, you know?
They can, and we also have a Q R code that if people have a code enforcement, it's, I think it's on our business card. Is that right, Maria? Yeah, you can just take the code enforcement business card. If you see something, you can scan the Q R code on your phone and type it in on your phone and complain that way as well.
Oh, wow. And is it anonymous or you put in, is it like public comment where you put in all your information?
You, it can be anonymous or it can be you can give your information. Yeah. And you could always call.
Right, exactly. I understand. Yeah, it's completely driven and do, and does our department call them? Do they call the person who submitted it or no, not necessarily?
If you give a phone number, but if not, we can't. Yeah, so it's up.
But they are still by, like, they have to follow through with it, even if they have minimal information.
Yeah, the biggest thing I say is you can be anonymous and still provide a phone number. But if you state that it's anonymous, I I believe, and and maybe Janine, our attorney, can answer this question. If somebody asks to be anonymous, I believe if there's a public records request that we are not required to release that person's information or phone number. So Janine, do you know the answer to that?
Yes, that is actually, a permitted exception under the Public Records Act. We need to have some sort of way on our form for them to to note that box. But if if there is a public health or safety issue or the 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 complaintant indicates a desire for nondisclosure, that that will prevail.
Great. So that's that's always good to know too, because nobody wants to have somebody come back and say, well, if I complain that and and give my address or name, then somebody's gonna come out and retaliate against me. So we want to make sure that everybody knows that. It's kind of like the whistleblower, you know, you don't, you want to protect that person if they have a concern for the overall citizen, the city.
Obviously, it's an added concern.
We added a box on our form that you can check if you want your name to be released.
Oh, I see. Nice. Okay, cool. Yeah, I was just curious how that goes. I know it's.
No, that was a great question. Good, good knowledge and good information to have out to the public.
Well, it's, yeah, good to send to the people. So if they come to us, it's like they can go to the website. Yeah, there's a process.
All right. Any further questions for Tracy? Good job, Tracy. Thank you very much. And the city does look beautiful. I'm in agreement with most people.
Keep it up.
Yep. Uh, that brings us all the way down to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business, council? Well, tonight's gonna be a short night, isn't it? Get prepared for the next one because the next one's gonna be a little longer. Is there any new, is there any new business? If there's no new business, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, for attending. It's halftime. I love it. Hey, how are you doing? I haven't seen you for a while.